Responsibilities are and what my responsibilities are when I'm conducting this audit. And I won't worry you with all those details. It also goes on to, at the conclusion, it kind of explains that there is some information in this report. There's a management's discussion analysis and there are some pension schedules and information are prepared by the plan administrators. That those things we haven't actually applied any audit procedures to, and our opinion does not extend to those. We've just provided that information as supplementary information. And then the last part explains that there are other schedules that are more related to the financial statements. We've applied procedures to those schedules as well as the basic financial statements, and our opinion does extend to them as well. We believe that they are fairly stated in all material respects. The last paragraph of that report explains that there's a second report that I have to issue whenever I conduct my audit in accordance with government auditing standards. So that second report, the purpose of that report is to, for, for me to discuss the testing that we've done for the city's internal controls over how we accumulate financial information, how we protect it, how we put it together, and how we are able to come up with the financial statements. And the, the second part has to do with the city's compliance with various laws and regulations, contracts, grant agreements, all sorts of things. In the first part on the internal controls, what it explains is that I'm not actually going to issue an opinion on the internal controls themselves, but in order to conduct my audit, I have to understand the internal controls. I have to know what controls do we have in place, and I have to know whether they're operating or not. So while I'm getting that information, if I would find something that I would consider to be a deficiency, this is where I would report that. So unfortunately, we've got one thing that we need to talk about in this area of the internal controls. Under the old rules of auditing, if I found a misstatement or something that was just an error, something that was wrong, and I recommend a correction, then as long as we got it right by the time it went to the final report, it was no harm, no foul. Well, a few years ago, they changed the rules for us auditors. So now that if we find a material adjustment that has to be made, that's an indication that there was a breakdown somewhere in the internal controls and it didn't accumulate the information the way it was supposed to. And that was the case this year. We recommended a couple of adjustments. There was one with the risk management fund because some of the payments that were made on behalf of the city, the city didn't even make the disbursements. They were made on behalf of the city, but those didn't get booked into the financial statements. It, it looked like an oversight error, but it caused that fund to be misstated by about $430,000. So it sounds like a lot of money, but for what goes through that fund, that was not really that much. And then also with several of the outstanding bond issues, the revenue bonds, there were some adjustments that needed to be made for the payments, the principal and interest payments. They got recorded, they just got recorded in the wrong place. And it caused your expenditures to be understated and your equity got off a little bit too. But it was a significant dollar amount, and that's why we had to make a mention of it. Because that meant, you know, that the financial statements you all were relying on had those differences that needed to be made. Now, I generally just try to present the facts and let you all make up your mind about the severity and things like that. But the one thing I did want to point out, all of the things that we found, they were, they were obvious errors. They weren't like somebody had put something to intentionally try to hide it, or it wasn't a transaction that wasn't posted because we didn't want to put it in there. They were all posted, they just weren't in the right spots. And I think it kind of fell kind of in a gap period for you. I know that we had the transition in the folks' leadership in, in the accounting department. In fact, our first day on the audit was your current finance director's very first day on the job. So she obviously had not even had a chance to barely take her coat off, much less be responsible for the information that we've got. But she and her department were very helpful with working with us and finding what corrections needed to be made and getting those corrections done. So that made the process much easier than it could have been. But anyway, I'm getting a little off topic. So the second part of that report I was talking about has to do with compliance that I mentioned. And that report goes on to explain that we found no instances of non-compliance with any of the, the testing that we were, were doing that was required to be reported there. So that's the first two reports that we have in that document. The third report is necessary for the federal government whenever your federal expenditures are more than $750,000 in a year. So your expenditures from federal monies totaled $7,340,000 or just under that. So what the federal government tells me is there, there's a complicated formula to go through about what programs are we going to test? And they require a certain amount of, of coverage, a percentage that we have to test in very fine detail. So we ended up, we tested the airport improvement program, $924,000 in expenditures and the coronavirus, the ARPA money, there were just over $5.4 million spent there. So the federal government then tells me for those two programs, here's a list of specific compliance requirements we want you to test. They include the obvious things like, did, did you use the money for what you were supposed to? Did you have records about what you spent the money on? Those were the easy ones. There's reports that have to be prepared. Were they accurate? Were they filed on time? And no problems there. Some of the things we get into, really kind of get into the weeds as far as the types of things they want us to test. Sometimes we are looking at procurement, suspension and debarment compliance requirements. Did you pay money to anybody who was barred from doing business with the federal government? So this, this gets pretty extensive sometimes. So for both of those grants, when we tested all of their requirements, we reported that we found no instances of non-compliance with any of the federal requirements that were required. So there's another unmodified or clean opinion on your compliance with their requirements. Now, the second part of their report is they want to know also, not only did you just comply, but how are your internal controls over complying with those requirements? They want to make sure that we didn't just get lucky, we were intentional and had mechanisms in place to ensure we're going to comply. So we looked at all the internal controls over all those compliance requirements, and we also found those to be appropriately designed and in place, and that they were all operating the way they were supposed to work. So which helped lead to the, the, the report with no findings. So that's the third report that we have. Now, the financial statements themselves, I normally don't stand here and go back over all of those financial statements again. I know you're aware of your financial condition, you don't need me to take up your evening repeating all of that. But we do look at things such as the condition with trends, things like that, anything that we would find that would be out of the ordinary, we would sure bring to your attention. But we found nothing to be out of line or not meeting with our expectations. So that being said, that's a lot of, of document that you have for the audit. If you've had a chance to look at it in advance, and I've gone through it fairly quickly. But I would be certainly willing to answer any questions if anybody had any questions about what we did or how we went about it or what we found.
Jeff, a couple, two questions. The two errors that you talked about, I'm assuming that those were just human error and just where they were placed within the, the system?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it's usually it's pretty obvious for an auditor to be able to tell if something was done intentionally or if it's just a mistake, and these were mistakes. The only reason I had to mention them was because of the size.
Good. For the, for the sake of audience and, and our residents, will you explain the, the, the difference and similarities of if the state came in and audited us, our financials versus you coming in? A lot of times we get a lot of clickbait about someone should go in and audit the city. And I'd love for you to explain those.
Actually, I think I could probably address that pretty well because before I came to the firm, and that's been several years ago now, but before I came to the firm, I worked for the Missouri State Auditor's Office. I spent four and a half years there as one of their auditors. And I actually did get the opportunity to go to different cities and work on petition audits that they call it. Those are performed by the state whenever a certain percentage of voters sign a petition to request it. What a state audit would involve is they will hold a meeting in advance with the, the petitioners that, that have a problem with what's going on. And they will just basically ask them, okay, what do you think's happening and what do you want us to look at? And then they go back to Jefferson City, they, they go over what the concerns are and they try to figure out, okay, what of those concerns are things we can address? Sometimes they're not really anything that an auditor can address. One of the meetings I attended, the folks were upset because there was no rock on the gravel road. And that was their concern, why is there no rock on the road? So we were trying to figure out how are we going to audit about how much rocks there? But anyway, that's what they do is they'll sit down and figure what can we do to audit to address these concerns? And then they will come in and they will specifically look at those things. And they will look at the internal control structures around them, but it's going to be focused more on those particular concerns. So, you know, if, if you've got folks who are familiar with the way the city does things, they could be focused towards that, but a lot of times my experience with the state was that, you know, a lot of times it just may not have been a lot of communication for whatever reason, and, and folks just didn't understand. So the audit would be conducted, they would prepare a report, and it's not going to be on a financial statements like ours is. It's going to be just specifically directed, here's the things that we found and here's what we think you need to do to fix it. So, and then of course, there's a, a bill comes attached to that too.
So just to reiterate, the, the concerns you found, they have been already rectified. I mean, these were quick.
Yes, these financial statements reflect the corrections.
Yep, good. And to Robbie's point, I would just tell the public that our annual budgets and our audits are posted on our city website. If anybody's really interested in digging into all of these details, you can simply go to the city website and find those very easily.
I was just going to say those two small errors, that's why we have, why we conduct an audit. I mean, that's so you can catch those type of bookkeeping.
Right, it is not uncommon. And I would say that of all the audits that we conduct, we probably have this similar finding for a variety of different reasons and maybe 75 to 80% of them.
I would mention that since my time here on council, this is the first time that we've seen any error of such over the last seven years. So that we've done pretty good considering the changes in, in finance directors. I believe it's the fourth in six years, I believe. So with that, with that change and disruption, I, I'm, I'm happy with where we're at. Thank you, Jeff.
You're very welcome. Normally at this point of my, my discussion, I thank everybody and, and I slip right on out the door. But when it is the case, I like to offer this information. And those of you, like I said, who've heard me before know what I'm going to say. But I just wanted to tell you that in case you don't get the opportunity to see how business is conducted on a daily basis, we're here for several weeks. And to do this report, to do this audit work, it involves a lot of people. So we are talking to a lot of people who work for the city. And I just wanted to pass along to you that every single person that we worked with, we found them to be very professional, very helpful. Whenever we asked for something, you know, we got answers fairly quickly. Of course, I always like to say too, that the folks may understand too, that the sooner the auditor gets what he wants, the sooner he'll go away too. I don't know if that has anything to do with it or not, but no, I just wanted to let you know that we've, we really appreciate the professionalism and, and folks working with us. I, I offer that not because I want you to be happy that I have such an easy life with my audits, but generally an auditor's life is easier when the folks he's auditing have accountability for what they've done. And that's why I offer that to you, so you could take that away from it.
Well, thank you for the work and we'd be remiss if we didn't thank Lisa Mills for showing up on the first day of work, knowing that the auditors were wandering around the halls. So, and still, you're still here. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right, our next presentation is by the Southeast Missouri Regional Economic Development Incorporated, or CMO Ready, and we have Dr. James Stapleton coming to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you. I was, as I was planning to come here, I was thinking about the fact that I could skip an intro because I knew everybody. And then I remembered that I just met Shannon like two weeks ago and her amazing dog Maple, because she's training my not-so-amazing dog Satchmo. So I was glad to see her bring Maple in. So, so we appreciate the opportunity to come and update you on what's going on at the Economic Development Partner that was formerly known as Magnet, that's been renamed and reorganized as CMO Ready. And I'm going to try to give brief comments and then really spend some time with questions that you have. The brevity is not because we don't want to share anything, but really want to make sure we have some time to talk about what's been going on. I will start with just a little bit of background, and I won't skip this, even though that Robbie and Stacy and Dan have all been on the board of this organization for the benefit of everyone else, just so you make sure you understand what we've been up to. So we, back in 2020, a group of us sort of area business folks got together and started talking about some of the concerns we had with the sort of stagnant economic growth that was going on in the region. And we had a lot of questions about what was going on as it related to economic development. And frankly, the more questions we asked, the more confused we got. Or the more we found that there was a lack of information or a lack of activities going on that we assumed had been going on. And so at that point, we actually decided we should ask to get involved. So six of us from that original group actually agreed to become investors in the organization or sponsors of the organization. That group of six now, we're in our third year on the board. And part of the opportunity to do that is to invest $15,000 each year personally from our organizations into the, into the activities. And we'll kind of go over the budget, current operations budget of CMO Ready, sort of at the end of the project. And so we show up to our first meeting in 2021, and I think Robbie was on the board at that time. And at that time, the organization was considering moving into a process to hire a new executive director. The person that provided the leadership in the past had announced his retirement. And so with the, the number of questions that we had in regards to the sort of momentum of the organization and what had really been going on, we asked to sort of pause that project and really before we rushed into hiring an, an executive director, spend some more time really assessing where we were and honestly, the opportunities for what we could do that would have an impact moving forward. So we then immediately started searching for a contract consultant to come help us do that assessment and really to help us put together a strategic, a strategic plan for the next five years. I think most of you have seen some of this information has been published, the reports that came out of it. But it was Ernst &amp; Young that we ended up contracting with to do that. There were two sets of outcomes from the initial assessment that they did. The first were quantitative and obviously you'll get a copy of this, of the slide deck. And I think you probably have copies of the reports that were generated from Ernst &amp; Young. If not, I'm happy to provide those to you. The quantitative outcomes weren't thrilling, to say the least. We're, I think most of us now understand that we had some sluggish employment numbers. We had widespread regional population decline. And really, as you go down the list of broad measures of economic and demographic data, we didn't have that many positive trend lines. The second part of what the Ernst &amp; Young team did was a qualitative assessment, standard kind of thing for strategic planning. Came into town, asked a bunch of questions, did focus groups, met and did interviews with individuals, met with business leaders, and came away with several qualitative outcomes. And frankly, some of those really became concerning to the board. I think that was at a moment, I think those of us who had studied the data for a long time kind of understood probably where we were going to be at, although it was updated with 2020 census data, which was fresh. But this qualit, the qualitative outcomes were kind of disturbing. And so I'll talk about a few of those. Essentially, we found that a lot of residents weren't aware of the empirical data about what was going on with our regional economy. We found sort of a widespread lack of understanding of what the heck it was that Magnet was supposed to be doing and how successful it was or not. And a lot of confusion about that. There was a lack of local or regional shared economic vision. We found a lot of partners not sort of always partnering. And then really disturbing, a lack of real sort of ally engagement with the business community. Business community didn't really trust the organization, depend upon it, or really understand exactly what it was doing. So we really knew that we had a lot of work to do. The last qualitative outcome EY shared with us that it was one of the organizations that they had done work in, that they were surprised to the level that the board relied solely on the executive leadership and wasn't more engaged. And so we were in that process that we thought when we started it was a strategic, a strategic planning process that the consulting team immediately shared some time with us to ask us to change direction and change course. And at that point, we made the decision at their recommendation to really step back in the process, in the process. Not put together years of planning around assumptions that were sort of based on the kinds of relationships and structures being in place that weren't there. And really to start reassessing and redeveloping the organization. And despite the surprise, we agreed to do that. And they really broke this down for us in kind of three steps, and I'll talk about a few of these things quickly. Really the idea of sort of resetting, kind of getting the board active. One of the observations from the group from Ernst &amp; Young, which are made up of a group that I had met years and years ago from Austin, Texas, called Avalanche Consulting. So you don't just think they're like big metro city slicker consultants, like these are folks who've been, spent a lot of time in small communities like ours. They, they really encouraged us to get more people engaged in the community in economic development. Not sitting back and relying on an organization or an individual, but from the board throughout the community, getting much more engaged in the work. Really then to reimagine what it was that we had opportunities to do that could be successful. Try to assess from looking at other communities that had been successful or were retooling themselves, what they were doing and try to sort of follow best practices in that regard. And then start over, rebuild, sort of look at what a new team would look like. Look at the programs and resources we would need to move forward and have positive outcomes. And we'll share with you kind of where we are in, in this process. So obviously, part of the strategic planning process was really to create new strategic goals. It's probably clear to everyone that the goal of economic development is really, is really based on the opportunities to develop more and higher quality jobs for people that live in the community and in the region. Other goals that we created were really around talent development, to really collaboratively work with other partners in the area to try to strengthen our talent pipeline and really to promote greater awareness about the region. One of the things the consultants found was nobody really knew about the sort of pro, pro-business, pro-job entrepreneurial kind of community that we have outside of the community around the state. We also created some new strategic objectives. This is, this is really an expansion of the work of the organization as we plan for it to move forward. As many of you may know, in the old days of the Economic Development Organization Magnet, it was solely focused on recruiting new businesses to the community, specifically with kind of a focus on industrial kinds of businesses. Most modern economic development organizations have expanded beyond that to put more time and effort into trying to help strengthen the growth of existing businesses, to try to help start more businesses, to build a more diverse business base. Certainly trying to help solve some of the problems around talent and workforce development. And then lastly, kind of starting over with branding and messaging. So the short-term actions that we agreed to at that time were really based on the recommendations of the consulting firm to get out and, and really as a board, engage with people in the, in the community and in the region to try to assess where people were with their awareness about the organization, what their thoughts and ideas were about what we should be doing moving forward. We also developed four working committees with two of those committees being focused on learning more about opportunities and needs in workforce development. One of those focused on business and innovation, kind of a startup, small business focus. And one of those on the recruitment and retention efforts. And so we've got those four committees that have been working. By the way, these are volunteer board members spending, some of us a fair amount of time working on these, on these activities. And we've already engaged in some real work while we're continuing to build the rest of our strategic plan out. And the last item on the short-term actions is to begin understanding more with this renewed plan and a long-term vision that's really built around the kinds of regional work that we need to be doing. An assessment of what kind of executive leadership talent and experience that would benefit our community the most. So a few short-term outcomes, I'll share a bit about each of these. And then you're, we're happy to share any other information we can with you about them. One of the things that our industrial recruitment group has been working on is when the city decided to sell the North Business Park, obviously it leaves the area without a sort of industrial park or well-developed comprehensive plan for industrial recruitment and site development. And so one of the things that we had been doing for some time was to try to figure out what was going on at the old site. So we have a group that's made quite a bit of progress, really assessing what the opportunities are near Nash Road and the surrounding area around Nash Road. We put a group together that's working with our USEDA rep. We plan to submit a grant application very soon for a technical assistance grant to actually build a multi-year comprehensive plan that includes not just the little bit of land where businesses exist today on Nash Road, the property and acreage that's around there, including on the east side of I-55, a 350-acre tract of land that's already being developed by a Scott City developer, along with the support of the city of Scott City, who's engaged in the work that we're doing to try to put an entire plan together, would include the port, the rail spur that's there, really trying to understand what kinds of businesses we should strategically try to go recruit or how we should respond to requests for information that we get. And then really try to put our best forward in being competitive. As you may know, there have been, we're unaware of any examples of a successful recruitment or relocation of a business to one of the industrial sites that the community has had for some period of time. Part of that is because there aren't that many companies that relocate any longer. Part of it was that we didn't have competitive sites and programs in place, in our view, really to be able to, to step into those opportunities very successfully. So we can talk a little more about that project. We're also leading the collaboration with some folks, some, some in this room, who we really need to do a better job of how we have transparent and real, authentic and open discussions when we receive requests for information about what sites we may have. I know some of you don't do this every day, so, and in fact, this is an activity I'm not all that involved in either. But when a company starts to relocate, they typically hire a consultant called a site selector. Those site selectors comb data to find out where their company may fit in, into a region based on all kinds of data. And then they'll start sending out requests for information from communities who fit those models. So the question is, how do we respond to those? When do we decide to respond? When do we decide not to respond? Who needs to be involved in those discussions? We have had as a board for some period of time, questions about how that process, process worked. And frankly, found out it was typically a small group of people that, that were sort of having those conversations and not everybody probably who needed to be in those discussions in the room, and we want to fix that. Part of the fixing that will be to have regional partners and communities in the region alongside us and help. and communities in the region alongside us and helping decide what's not just best for Cape Girardeau or Scott City or Jackson, but what's best for Southeast Missouri. If one of our communities can compete over the others, we want to put our best foot forward in that. So we'll come back at some point, give you an update about that. Some of us are meeting in this room next week to keep working on that. And then we're also, we didn't have some simple things we needed to have, like a digital inventory of all the commercial buildings and sites that are available, so that when someone from the outside comes in digitally looking at the community, they can get easy access to those kinds of things. Three other real short conversations about some outcomes. We have had discussions with major parties involved in the communities or led discussions about some improvement consolidation of allied health programs and training programs. And I think making really good strides in that area. We've also led efforts to continue discussions about how to attract Rankin Technical College and a number of technical industrial training programs to the region, working with the Career and Technical Center, as well as with Mineral Area College, and making good progress there. And then the organization supported Codify's effort to actually in a successful application for $1.5 million grant from the federal government to continue our software developer training program and cybersecurity training program. And by support, I mean they just patted us on the back. So two things real quick about funding. This is our current operations funding. So for many, many years, the organization then called Magnet was funded primarily by the City of Jackson, City of Cape, Cape Girardeau County and Scott City. And for a long time, pretty close to those amounts on an annual basis. And then three years ago, commitments were made from private groups for an additional $90,000 investment into the organization's operations. So today, in this budget year, $279,000, almost $280,000 in investment into the organization. A question was asked of us and we're working on plans for sort of what's next. Really kind of stepping back with all the information that we've gained, plans that we'll have in place, what do we need to do moving forward? And so we're really looking at a five-year planning horizon and trying to get both private and public funding commitments for a five-year period. We've looked around at a lot of peer organizations and communities. I list Jefferson City here. Jefferson City has gone through almost exactly the same transition we're going through. They just did it starting two years ahead of us, specifically the way we're doing it. And they have five-year commitments for about $600,000 per year to support the operations of that organization. As a note, Jonesboro invests about $1 million a year in the operations of their economic development organization. And so that's our goal. From private and public sources, regardless of the makeup of those, to put enough operational resources in that we can attract a high-quality executive group to lead the organization in the next five years. Talking to the individual who used to be the Director of Economic Development for the State of Missouri, who is now the Executive Director of the Jefferson City Regional Economic Development Group. The amount of funding that the community could say that it had in place to support its operations was a big reason he chose to leave government and go into that private sector job. The last thing I would comment on is we also don't have, as an area, resources that are set aside in reserve when we get opportunities to invest in economic development projects. Many of our peer communities that were studied by Ernst &amp; Young do. And we have always sort of operated here, as I understand it. If a project came along, there would be conversations about if we could make investments at that time, and mostly we didn't have the funding to be able to do that. So we're actually calling upon our partners to not make direct injections of capital into projects that we don't even know exist today, but to start setting aside funding in public budgets that when those projects do come along, are sitting in reserve. And then that body at that time can make the decision based on the merits of the project and the economic impact that it will generate, whether or not it wants to invest in those. But up until then, those funds would sit in reserve. You may have read several months ago that the Alderman of Jackson set aside $1 million in a reserve fund exactly like this. And the last thing is just giving you a list of the current board members. There's an executive committee on the board made up of the seven individuals there. I believe Jeff Maurer and Tim Goodman are here. Rob Gilligan is also here from the chamber. Brian Giroux is here from the Jackson Chamber. So you see the executive committee, we meet on a monthly basis. The regular full board meets on a quarterly basis. The last thing I would say is I would expect our relationship as an organization with the City of Cape Girardeau to be different as we move forward. In the past, as I've served on the board, it's mostly a fiduciary responsibility. Couple appointees that from the council show up to board meetings, vote on the matters they have to vote on, but there's not a lot of interaction besides that. Already, I think in the last six months or year, we have a lot more interaction with staff in the city's leadership, and we'll continue to want to do that as we move forward. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer questions if they're, if you're not pleased with what we're doing or they're hard questions, I'll ask one of these guys.
I do, I have a question. Formerly known as Magnet, as you said, one of the goals was recruiting businesses here. What was your outcome of the number of businesses that you brought in under Magnet?
I wish we knew.
Okay.
We asked the same question three years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
So how many years have Magnet been in existence then? Before you changed it, did the rebranding?
Yeah, it's before the rebranding, it's been around a long time.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, to our knowledge, there's no data that exists that would sort of show a pipeline of potential projects over the years. There was no postmortem done on why we didn't win certain projects or why we did. There was anecdotes, but no data that we could rely on.
I do have another question too. You mentioned like bringing high executive people. Did you have a certain number of the certain businesses or certain people that, you know, we'd be able to bring here? I kind of looked, I was trying to remember what you had at first of some of the things that we lag behind, like wages and different things like that. Do you have certain numbers of how intentional that would be? How many that would be? How many businesses, how many people, how many organizations, what level? I mean, do you have the outcome of those numbers you expected? So as you maybe ask for different funding to be able to support that?
Yeah, absolutely. So I appreciate that question. I think one of the other big differences is we come back with sort of final strategic plans that are down to the program level.
Okay.
What you'll see is that we'll sort of, we'll sort of generate both outputs and outcomes that are going to be estimated or anticipated from those efforts. We'll give regular reports against those metrics. And we'll also provide the estimated economic impact of those activities. For instance, I'm involved in training sort of adult software developers, most of whom don't have any experience about software development before they start. There's a company here called Visient that's added probably 100 software developer jobs in the last three years. The economic impact of that, of those, just the salaries of those individuals, if you add sort of direct salary and indirect salaries, because they create other jobs and the induced impact, it's probably $20 million a year. So we'll provide those kinds of estimated outcomes, outputs and outcomes as we move forward before any decisions would be made about those projects.
And I just have one more statement because it's a personal passion of mine. I know many of these board members. And I think it's very pivotal in growing and progressing to have a diverse board and different entities that offer different perspectives, but still have some insight in that regard.
Yeah.
So it'd be nice to kind of see a little bit diversity in your board.
Yeah, I would.
Not the same status quo with everything, because so many people have so much to offer in our community that can add a different perspective or enhance the organization. But that's just a personal passion of mine. If you want to grow in advance, you have to be in different sectors or have people in different areas to come together to be able to do that. But that's just, that's my little personal, I always kind of hit that note though.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Tamika. I think there are two opportunities immediately to do that. Obviously, the public sponsors or investors appoint the board members to the board. Those board members don't have to be sitting councilmen and women. They can be anyone from the community that they choose. And secondly, for the first time two years ago, there was an open invitation to the community to invest in and sit on the board. So invest in the organization and have access to the board in that way. And we would love more people to do that. We'll be promoting another opportunity to do that when we go out with our five-year campaign. And so we would appreciate any help you could give us in getting into those.
Each board member have to be an investor. You have to be an investor in order to be on the board.
Either an investor or appointed by one of the investors in the organization.
Okay.
The municipalities of Cape County, Scott City, Jackson, Cape have board spots, basically.
Yes.
And then in addition to that, then the investors have board spots.
Yeah. And we need, we need more. And I agree with you, we need as much diversity as we can possibly bring to the group.
Questions, comments? I would just add the concept of a an economic development division or a fund or a reserve fund in the city has been tossed around here for a couple of years since I've been on the council, maybe before that. So this is, I appreciate, you know, the presentation. It's kind of putting some, putting some meat on the bone in terms of what the council, not specifically just this council, but in previous years, we've talked about, you know, does this need to be something that the city has as an additional department? Or is this something that we look to a contracted partner, which SEMO Ready currently is? And that's, that's why you're here. Do we look, you know, to get more of a result from that, from that contract? I will say, I joined this board in April and just to see the progress and the changes and improvements, progress, I guess, sums it up, that you all have, that you've talked about, that has happened since last April has been pretty tremendous. And I'm excited to see, see how things are moving forward. I did just want to add one thing, and it's kind of a random thought, but I read a few weeks ago in a, in a national newspaper. It was a story about Jason Smith, our congressman for the eighth district here in Missouri. And one comment in that article mentioned something I had not, I had not heard of. It said that this eighth district is the ninth most economically depressed district in the entire country. Some of you all had probably heard, knew this, but I just didn't know that number. And it was, caught me, you know, I was pretty shocked. And so knowing that in terms of the work that you're trying to do, it's important to remember both of those things. And maybe answers the question about why, why is there such a concerted effort needed in this, in this whole topic? And so I just appreciate the concerted effort that's being put in by SEMO Ready to address some of these things.
And some of the unique challenges, because in addition to being the ninth most economically depressed, I think it's the third most rural district of all of them as well. So that brings with it some unique challenges from a population, the breadth of the population spread out and the challenges that creates, but also the opportunities it might create as well. So I commend you guys for your, your effort and your ongoing way to think differently about this than what has been done, because it's been, it's needed a revitalization. So I appreciate everybody who's put the legwork in with this. I'm excited to see what the working groups come up with, with, you know, next steps. As I'm assuming that's what they're developing is the strategy for each of those. What are the actual action steps moving forward? And from that, I think it'll be easier to come ask from your partners, you know, to increase that budget and then start to see the real outcomes from it. So kudos to you guys. Thank you.
Thanks. We look forward to the ongoing conversation.
Would you mind speaking to those four working groups just a little bit more?
In terms of?
Just what they are, what they do?
Yeah.
What the focus is?
Yeah, so, you know, really thinking about when you get down to the very granular level of an implementation plan as we move forward, the sort of what are you doing every day when you get up as a, as an organization? The four areas that the assessments sort of determine where we have both need and opportunity are two areas of workforce development. Not that those are the only two areas of need or opportunity. One is sort of the technical vocational trades. So there's been plenty of discussion in the community over the last several years about the gaps that exist in terms of affordable, accessible technical training for entry into vocations like auto mechanics and welding and building trades, those kinds of things. And not just some training, but actually nationally recognized and industry credentialed kinds of training that really almost guarantees employment, assuming a job exists and there are plenty of jobs now. So one working group is really working on what the plans are to try to, to try to make some, some inroads in that area. Another group is doing the same on digital occupations. And obviously, that's a group I'm involved in, given my day job at Codify and all that we're already doing in that area. But really looking not just at how to train adults for jobs, but how do we, how do we raise more awareness with young people? A big part of what we do at Codify with the digital piece is really around the mission of our foundation, which is access to individuals to things that ordinarily they don't get access to, like high-quality training that puts them on really high-quality occupational pathways. So how do we get more young people aware of those occupations? So those two groups are working on those things kind of alongside each other with just different, different occupations as the focus. Obviously, a lot of what we, what I mean when I say working is we're having what seems like endless numbers of meetings with partners, with employers, trying to figure out what people say versus what there really is a need for and what people say and versus what's really being delivered in other programs. And then the other two groups are really one around the recruitment and retention. The primary focus of it, as you can see early on, is really trying to figure out how we can get our act together in terms of industrial recruitment. There have been opportunities and will continue to be for us to have some success in that, in that area. And we just need to, we just need to take the steps to do everything we can. There's a retention component to that as well. One of the industrial challenges we have is we have businesses who don't have appropriate wastewater system, even if they wanted to add employees, i.e. at the Nash Road site. We also have businesses who struggle to find an expansion site, because we don't have any of those sites to speak of. And then the last area is more around sort of small business. Sort of individuals who are looking to be self-employed, start small companies or even start companies that begin small could be big. Connecting, we have resources and things that go on in a community, but they're not always very well-connected. Trying to really fill those gaps. So those four areas will have actionable strategic plans in the fairly near future. And that'll be a part of our five-year plan moving forward.
When you talk about digital jobs, I just wondered, with all the recent announcements Maida and other groups that are laying people off, is this a concern that, you know, you're going to have this huge number of people in the job market have been laid off? So, you know, what the future is for that?
Yeah, so I can share my opinion. I'm sure other people would have different opinions. When those tech companies make job announcements, not every one of those jobs is a technical job. Obviously, those businesses have people that do all kinds of things. So not just digital kinds of occupations. And also the unbelievable unfilled demand for positions like cybersecurity analyst, cybersecurity developers, software application developers. I mean, there's, we're 1.5 million unfilled software developer positions in the country. So we've got a lot of slack in that area. Most of these are, seem to be sort of fiscal, fiscally driven decisions, not, not maybe long-term. So, so I think it's something to, I think a well-diversified economy is always the best solution. It's just that we've been really under-diversified in that technical segment over the years. It's the one area where we got kind of left behind. As Nate says, like many other rural communities, that's been one of the challenges.
Thank you.
I was encouraged when you expanded upon that, so thank you. Because I was, the main point that I was going to stress was, you know, one of, I mean, you're spot on in your assessment when you said that, you know, you haven't really recruited many large industries to set the roots here. But one of the biggest economic drivers that we've had to our area is But one of the biggest economic drivers that we've had to our area is those that have had their roots here have decided to expand their footprint here. And so, that way to, to build that relationship, which I know the chambers play a role in that, but also to have this group, because that's, that may continue to be the big economic driver from our area, is the way to support those large employers, or medium or small employers, become a, you know, become a large employer in our area by helping them expand their footprint, however that might be with their new service line or whatever, going forward, to not leave them behind, but realize how important they are for our economy and our future.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Nate. The, one of the things we really started trying to understand early on is what level quality relationship that the Economic Development Organization had with the leaders in those kinds of companies. And we found out there wasn't much. We, the organization didn't know, the decision-makers didn't know, you know, sort of what was happening inside those, those businesses. And, and so that's an area we've worked really hard at, had a lot of meetings, we'll continue to have to do that. It's part of building the sort of ally engagement, but yeah, focus on the good businesses that have opportunities to grow as well.
Only thing I would add is the last two years have been a lot, a lot going on and been a heavy load to the, to everybody on the board, really. You know, it says a lot that you have six-bit private business owners that are going to invest as much money and time as you and Tim, Jeff, and, and the others. And, and not for any personal gain, just to make, make Cape Girardeau and our region, as we've talked about, better economically, from an economic development standpoint. So I'm, I'm extremely proud of the work that the executive committee has done, and, and I'm extremely proud of the direction that we're headed. And I know that we can say we've left it better than what we found it. So, thank you all for everything.
Two last questions, if you could just touch on, for, for the education of us all. And you've spoken about this, the, the role that you see your organization having in the region.
Yeah.
Not just Cape Girardeau, but for the region, and then also in the state.
Yeah. So I'm looking for a path of brevity here. So, you know, really, if, if you think about sort of how regional economics work, and then how sort of businesses operate, it's, it's, it's been interesting, and, and this is a, a thing that Jeff Maurer has pointed out a number of times, that is a great illustration for this. Those of us that do business regionally always have thought regionally. It's sort of the parochial nature of communities and government organizations that seem to have struggled a little bit more with that, that high school football, basketball teams. But, but, but really what, there, there isn't a situation at this stage where it, it occurs to us that some economic development advancement in Perryville, in Perry County, or Sykeston and Scott County, or Cape Girardeau, or Scott City, or Jackson, there wouldn't be mutual benefit. And so the problem we do have at this point is that we're not, we're not working together. We, we were friendly, but we don't, we don't really align our work, we don't align processes, those kinds of things. So I am pleased to say we have meetings scheduled with a group from Perry County in three weeks to sit down and start sort of figuring out what it looks like to work much closer together. We have about that same time, early March, mid-March, a meeting down in Scott City to do the same. So, so I think not just locally, how, how we work together in Jackson and Cape and Scott City, but how we really try to help each other be more competitive, share resources. The organization that I lead, you know, we're now working with people across 47 counties, because we just need, we just really need to work together to kind of share those resources. So, so I think we, we would love for the government components to come along with us and make sure that you're doing that. I really appreciate the work that's being done by our congressional delegation for the first time since I've been here, being in meetings with them. They're all working much more together, spending some time in Jeff City, they're all working together there. So a little bit of momentum on that side of things, too.
And then just, and maybe you've already answered this, but just kind of at the state level, would you, do you see SEMO Ready being almost like a, like a lobbyist for our region, or?
Well, I wouldn't say that, but, but certainly, as a, as a region, as, as SEMO Ready is a component of the economic development effort in the region, we need a greater awareness, not only in Jeff City, but around the state, as we move forward, about the sort of ways we've worked together to build comprehensive collaborative plans. I don't think it's any secret if anyone gets outside of the community, spends time outside of, in the state, but outside of here. One of the common criticisms of our region is that we don't collaborate very well together. And when they encounter us on the outside, they see us as kind of working separately and even somewhat individually and against each other at times. And I've, I've been, I've been through that myself. So, so I think we can have a better presence at state government that can have economic impacts here, as the quality of our congressional delegation there and their collaboration works better. And likewise, our work together, economic development, from an economic development standpoint. And you're already seeing some aspects of that happen now, and some funding that's coming the region's way. But we have more, we have more opportunity there.
Anybody else? Thank you very much for the, for the discussion and the presentation. Appreciate it. All right, next, we have communications and reports from the council. Anyone have anything to share? Next, items of discussion. Is there anyone in the audience who is here to appear as an advisory board applicant? Okay, seen none. We will then move on to the planning and zoning commission report.
Good evening. I'm trying to pull up the agenda that I got in an email. There were only two items on the agenda. The first was a request, a public hearing on the request of Robert Landgraf on behalf of the Charles Hunsey Trust to rezone property located at 2403 South Sprig Street from M2, which is heavy manufacturing and industrial, to an agricultural district, AG. There were eight votes in favor of that request and no, none in opposition, so that passed. Second item was a public hearing on the request of Crystal Walker on behalf of Walmart Real Estate Business Trust for a special use permit for long-term use of a shipping container on property located at the Walmart store here in Cape, 3439 William Street in the C2 Highway Commercial District. And that passed with a unanimous eight votes in favor and none opposed. That was the, that was the normal business. I did think it was important at the meeting to request city staff. We've got several new members on the commission, and it seems as though my concern has been with, with new individuals, that maybe there lacks some consistency on how things are interpreted. So we asked Ryan and staff to describe how they go through the process when an application comes into the office. And I think sometimes individuals think Ryan just says, ah, that should be, you know, R4, ah, ah, that should be R2. There's a great deal of study that goes into the process, meetings, there's collaboration and cooperation among the city staff. And I'll just say, I'm really impressed with Ryan and the work that he does. The staff that you have is, is exemplary, and the work that he does is just fantastic. Generally speaking, when it comes to us, it's been well-vetted and well-thought-out, and a recommendation is practical and reasonable. And I just wanted to assure you guys of that process that, that we go through on the commission. So I don't know if anybody's got any questions.
I would just, I would just echo that. Every time I talk to Ryan, I feel like I learned 27 new things, so.
And I know we have several new members on that commission, so thank you guys for your leadership in doing that, too.
Ryan Tremplin being our city planner. We will now move into regular session and begin, start with the roll call vote. Mr. Taylor?
Mark Bliss.
Here.
Robbie Guard.
Here.
Stacy Kinder.
Here.
Dan Preston.
Here.
Jamaica Randall.
Here.
Nate Thomas.
Here.
Shannon Truxell.
Here.
All right, thank you. Council, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Guard, Mr. Preston, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, agenda is passed. We have no public hearings tonight. We have a consent agenda. I skipped your little deal there, Dr. Haskins, sorry. Would you like to give us a review?
I will. Real quickly, Mayor, we only have a handful of items here. Number six that we added, it's an agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration to relocate the traffic control tower out at the airport. You know, we obviously want to, you to consider, to execute a performance agreement with EED Development for work being done out at Dahuzi. Number nine, of course, is a performance agreement with Maurer Properties for the Touchdown Ridge Estates, number two. And a performance agreement with Limac LLC, third subdivision. Mayor, that concludes the review.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Young, will you read the consent agenda, please?
Bill 2314, ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a design-build agreement with KCI Construction Company for the new passenger terminal project at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. Bill 2314, ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a design-build agreement with KCI Construction Company for passenger terminal project at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. Bill 2315, ordinance authorizing the acquisition of temporary construction easements and rights away from various property owners for the Minnesota Avenue and Highway 74 project in the city of Cape Girardeau. Bill 2315, ordinance authorizing the acquisition of temporary construction easements and rights away from various property owners for the Minnesota Avenue and Highway 74 project in the city of Cape Girardeau. Bill 2316, ordinance approving the record plat of Meadows Whispering Oaks Third. Bill 2316, ordinance approving the record plat of Meadows Whispering Oaks Third. Bill 2317, ordinance approving a second amended and restated redevelopment agreement between the city of Cape Girardeau and Rest Communications, Inc. Bill 2317, ordinance approving our second amended and restated redevelopment agreement between the city of Cape Girardeau and Rest Communications, Inc. Bill 2319, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration to relocate an RCO tower at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. Bill 2321, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a performance guarantee agreement with EED Development LLC for public sidewalk improvements at the locks at Dahuzi Phase 5 in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2322, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a performance guarantee agreement with Maurer Properties LP for public sidewalk improvements and Touchdown Ridge 2 in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2323, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a performance guarantee agreement with Limac LLC for public sidewalk improvements at Limac East Third Subdivision in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That agenda carries. We had one item removed from the consent agenda, that is Bill 2320, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Lloyd Slinker Painting Company, Inc., for the Cape Splash and Osage Center painting project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. I believe, Mr. Gannon, would you come forward? Let's hear all about it.
Good evening. Well, what you have before you is a authorization for the city manager to sign the contract with Lloyd Slinker Painting for the painting of the Osage Center and of Cape Splash Family Aquatic Center. Those are two separate projects, but they were bid out together to get the best price available, because once he mobilizes, he'll do both projects at one time. So questions I can answer.
Mr. Gannon, can you go over the cost for each of those two projects?
Sure. The, the, the original bid for the Osage Center, we procured that when this process started. That was $79,163. That was the, the original bid that we got. We had some other exterior maintenance items in the building that we wanted to knock out at that point in time as well. Specifically, there's two windows on the, the west side of the building that are broken, and actually have some areas rotting around them. So we want to replace those two windows as well, and those were a little over $22,000. So, so that bid came in at $100,000, which is what we requested. So the actual bid that came in from Lloyd Slinker Painting was $62,815 for, for the painting of the building. While the windows still remain at $22,282, which that springs us to $85,000 to, to, to do the exterior maintenance. The other $15,000 will be used for some other items that, that, you know, we have some, some, you never know what's going to pop up whenever this kind of work is done. There's some other items that we certainly anticipate will come up as, as they do their work on the building. But we have a lot of maintenance needs at Osage specifically. That building was built in 97, as I shared with you all when we started this process, and, and we haven't had any exterior maintenance to that building whatsoever. I just got an opportunity to go over there and walk around today, and there's just a lot of places that, that, that need some, some maintenance work done on them. So the intention with the additional funds would be to, to use it for any other items that pop up, that, that, that they find while they're actually doing that work. And then we have some other items as well that we can, can utilize some of those funds for, to, to get us ahead, because we don't have a great deal of money that's allocated from general fund for maintenance of that building. So this is a good opportunity for us to do that, which is what I shared with you all when we started this process.
So you would envision all of that eventually going to exterior maintenance for the, for the Osage Center?
Yes, yeah.
That $100,000?
Yeah, the, you know, specifically, and I was just mentioning to Penny Williams, she's the manager of the facility. And the other, one of the other items we want to do is, is the door sweeps. You know, the building was built in 1997, and the door sweeps are, are deteriorated. So there's gaps, you know, in between the doors, actually the vertical and, and horizontal, which doesn't make your HVAC as efficient as it could be, and then that allows for, for pests and rodents and stuff to get inside the building as well.
It does.
Yeah.
Seen it.
So.
In my own house.
So those are just, those are just examples of, of things that we want to do with the building. And this is just, you know, we, we, we fully intend on using very good use of these funds that we're, we feel so fortunate to have received to do this maintenance. And, and one of the important things about this building is, is it gets uses from, from so many people, from all parts of our community. And, and we're extremely proud of the staff for what they do over there, the uses that building gets. It's, it's fitness, it's recreation, it's classes, it's meetings, it's conventions. They had the father-daughter dance this weekend, it had over 800 people. And, and we had a, a whole crew of people mobilized to run that event. So just some really good things happen there. It's Cape Girardeau's oldest and most utilized community center. And we just want to, to, to utilize this money to the best of, of, of our ability to, to do some much-needed maintenance on the building.
So that $100,000 is coming from the ARPA funding that we approved? And then the Cape Splash, the pools and the, and the Lazy River need painting, and that funding is, is through, I can't remember.
That was, that was hotel motel.
Hotel motel, yeah.
Yeah.
And so this company will do both?
What's that?
This is the Lloyd Slinker?
Yes. Yeah, that's, that, that was the low bid. And, and so we're recommending that we procure Lloyd Slinker Painting to do both those projects.
Thank you. Any other questions? Does anyone from the audience have a question or concern about this issue? Okay, hearing none then. Council, is there a motion to approve Bill 2320?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Guard, Mr. Thomas, any further discussion? I've seen none. All those in favor of Bill 2320, please say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. We have several new ordinances tonight, and just as we just did, we will have a staff member describe those. And if anyone from the audience needs a couple of minutes for a, a question or concern about that particular issue, you can do so, come to the podium and speak then. First is Bill 2324, an ordinance approving the record plat of Limac East Third Subdivision. It's the first reading. Mr. Polley?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This ordinance approves a record plat for a 17-lot subdivision on the south side of LaSalle Avenue, adjacent to Rock Garden Subdivision. This is going to allow a 16-plot with one This is going to allow a 16-plot with one plot being a common area for stormwater and detention pod.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience here to speak on this issue? All right, seeing none then. Counsel, is there a motion to approve 2324? Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor of Bill 2324, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. And then lastly, Bill 2325, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation for the Kings Highway and Cape Rock Drive sidewalks project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading. Mr. Polley?
Thank you, Mayor. This supplement agreement is between the city of Cape Girardeau and MoDOT. You actually passed a resolution last meeting on this. MoDOT is wanting a ordinance instead of a resolution. So I had to bring it a second time to you.
Submoved.
Second. Redundancy. All right. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Okay, then we've already got this on the table. Further discussion by the council? All in favor then of Bill 2325, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have one appointment tonight for the Historic Preservation Commission. And counsel by your vote, Mary Kay Smith was, was voted into that. Is there a motion to approve Mary Kay Smith?
Submoved.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving Mary Kay Smith for the Historic Preservation Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. And under other business, this is where audience members may come forward and speak to something that is not on the agenda. We do ask for pre-registration for that, and speakers will have up to three minutes to, to share concerns. It is not a time when the council will interact, but if we need to do so, we will discuss further with staff. First, we have Mr. Andrew Ostrowski.
Andrew Ostrowski, 131 Winfield Circle. All I want to do is finish up, what I wanted to say was that, what I would like to do is, is say, Counsel, put on a ballot that the council, like, members should be compensated $52,000 a year and the mayor some $8,000. So we have a full-time counsel.
Wow.
I'm going to be like a city guy, being like a real city.
I will just, I will just let everybody know, that is a, that is a pay upgrade from our $100 a month. Actually, I earn $150 a month.
This way, this way I don't have to do the labor, except you guys put on ballots.
Just as a point of information, that, our, our compensation is, is stated in the city charter. And so there would need to be a city charter change, but thank you for that idea. And then secondly, Mr. Michael Joe Bragg, registered? Is he here tonight?
No.
Okay. He is not here. I'm sorry, only for preregistered, pre, you may not, I'm sorry. It has to be before, I believe, 4:00 or 4:30 in the afternoon. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Not this time, but please preregister for the next meeting. All right, we have nothing else on the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Mr. Guard?
Second.
Ms. Randall, any discussion? All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for your time.